Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, May 31, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules that council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before a city council and profanity is not permitted. Please restate your name after your call, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Zuber and Hill, Global Intelligence Society, candidate for President 2024, LGBTQIA+. Anyone want to tell the public what the symbols mean? Ms. Warwick, would you like to contribute to that off your phone? We are all bisexual, in my view. Why? Because we are created one part male, one part female, and it's fused. That's the biological genetic foundation and then gender, as most of you seem to be in agreement, our choices about what to wear, how to speak, and so on, and so on, and so on. I think that needs to be clarified. No one did that this morning, and I think that is a mistake. On this police issue, so what, we have a new bureau chief? Do people really talk to the police officers who go into the neighborhoods? We have 90-plus neighborhoods. Do you talk to them? What do they want? I'll tell you what they want. I'll tell you what they tell me that they want. They want somebody who has control of the information which is in the neighborhoods. Isn't that right, Mr. Kraus? In the Southside neighborhoods, Mr. Kraus is reading something while I'm talking. This shows absolute contempt for public comment and for a person who's doing public comment, regardless of whether it's Ron Miller or not. Isn't that right, Mr. Kraus? Mr. Kraus refuses to answer. More trouble on this point. The police deal with not compliance, they deal with deviance. How would you like it if every day he had to get up in the morning, had to go out, and deal with people, our people, city people, and throughout the United States of America who are doing something that is not right, is something that is wrong? That's what our police officers have to deal with. They're not convinced that just appointing a new bureau chief because of gender is going to make any difference whatsoever if that person is not familiar with the information in our neighborhoods. They want somebody, our officers do, who go into these neighborhoods, what they want is somebody who is operating at a very high level of intelligence, and they're not convinced that the head of the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Police are that. Ms. Strasburger, the BSL is in District Eight, and so is the Supercomputer Center, and so is Cyber Command in our defense network. Why don't you say anything about that? Those make Pittsburgh, and particularly, it makes Oakland, a target internationally, and it also makes Pittsburgh a target, and Oakland in particular, an international target. You need to speak about this, or you need to resign.
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. Thank you, Ronald Lynn Nar. That was very good. I honor my husband, who was a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s to 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Pennsylvania Constitution titled "The Declaration of Rights" is the entire article, and it's concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereigns, not the state, which would include municipalities and school boards. They shall not harm the people, or will be held accountable. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Michael Lamb should have attended our meeting to explain why the waste, fraud, and abuse continues. Waste, thousands of dollars per month, is occurring with Bon Air School. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support for the sale of the building to a developer. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of blockbusting and intentional infliction of distress. Why won't he advocate for we, the people, who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? It is no wonder that issues with the school district persist. Checks and balances don't exist when the same person is the controller for the city and his republic schools. Is that a conflict of interest? The Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of Bon Air. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Diane Turnchick. Not here, and I do not see that name online. Our next registered speaker is Matt Mahoney, whom I also do not see online. Our next registered speaker is Aikahana Hal Malkina. Nope, it's not her either. Our last registered speaker is Pomai Chakman Yahalihi.
Greetings, everyone. My title is East Pomai Chakmom Yahalahi. I'm a Grand Council Chief Member of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal Native American People, and I'm also the Grand League of Chief of my nation, the Onkwe Onway. And so I'm here today to remind and enlighten those who are unaware of what the definition and the meaning of colonization is. And I'll read this from etymology. Colonization, an act or process of colonizing. State of being a colony, 1758. Noun of action from colonized. In US history, the movement for assisted immigration, with an E, of free blacks to Africa for the formation of colonies there. The American Colonization Society organized in December 1816, hence colonizationist, is one who favors colonization of emancipated slaves or Slavs and free blacks to some other place in 1831. And to be clear, this noun of action, and this terminology, free blacks to Africa, not from Africa, was a term that was ambiguously used to identify the Aboriginal Americans, the so-called Indians of this land. And in that, we see this happening still today. Here are people, the Aborigines of America, the indigenous people of America, and the only indigenous people of America. To be indigenous to a land, you must originate from that land. You can't come from another land to be indigenous to this land, and that is anywhere. And it's disrespectful, and it's disingenuous for anyone to claim a title that does not belong to their ancestry. So with that, I want to move forward and say we have an opportunity right now to right the wrongs of all of our ancestors who played a role in colonizing, reclassifying, renaming, mislabeling the Aborigines of America. For in 1924, Walter Ashby Pleger, a staunch eugenics, applied a terminology to our people. That term became colored, and we were reclassified from Indian and no longer allowed to claim our identity because there was acts that were created to kill us, basically, for doing so. The Indian Scalping Act, the Indian Removal Act, the Homestead Act, and there's many other acts as well. We all have an opportunity, and we, as the indigenous and the Aboriginal of this land, have been held back for too long and continue to be held back. And when we celebrate everyone's accomplishments on our land, and we do celebrate those accomplishments too as well, as long as they're benefiting the whole, we see ourselves being isolated and pushed back and pushed aside. And these are punishments that will be held, people will be held accountable, if they choose to continue to ignore what we are saying. We are here, we've always been here, and there are laws that protect us. There's the Delaware Treaty.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, apartment 105, I mean, 316. I want to start off first to Mr. Kraus, since he left the room, he might, maybe he'll listen in the back. I want to say to Mr. Kraus, I am not attacking you, I'm attacking the actions that you do against me, and I can show that the bias, that you have been a bias, have been biased against me. Please let me understand, please let me explain. I asked for an open hearing about shopping saved. I brought in about 35 signatures. Okay, so we come to a meeting on Tuesday, Mr. Kraus does the meeting, I leave after the meeting, and I'm talking to Dan Gilman out there, we're talking, and he's looking up, and I see Kraus is in that room in 510. And he takes and opens the door and says, "Oh, Ms. Brown, I forgot to tell you, your hearing is Monday something, something, something." I said, "Mr. Kraus, that's not right." "No," I said, "you're incorrect. You shouldn't do me like this." Okay, so then when I do have the hearing, he says, "We have two speakers only," and I'm saying, "But who is this mysterious sponsor?" He would not even let me be his sponsor. I didn't get five minutes, I got three minutes. But I took and walked that neighborhood, all through the neighborhood, 30,000 signatures, and I said, "Mr. Kraus, you're not treating me right." I even was speaking, the one time I was talking, he cut me off. So when he hits the gavel, I have to stop talking. I sat down. There was a group from Southside at that time. The one of his ladies from the Southside stood up, Bruce So-and-so, and she's in the hallway talking, and he's smiling. Then he finally said, "No, you have to sit down." Do you understand? I'm saying, I'm coming here every day. You may not see it, but I'm treated like a second-class citizen. I have been coming for years, only because you don't know what you don't know. And you've all showed some kind of disdain for me. You don't, you do not speak up when he's wrong. We have no one to tell them, like, "Okay, look at Mr. Burgess." Well, he's doing his emails, I guess. He'll stay home and holler, and we can't hear him. He'll spend 10 to 15 minutes talking, and you won't come in here. But when you're here, you're sitting, and it should be against the law that they can bring their phones to the table. Uh-huh, shake it at me. See, that's the good Reverend, the good Reverend. You're gonna have to answer to somebody else, not me. And you better start praying. And before you die, you better say, "Lord, please forgive me."
Thank you very much. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak? Seeing none, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. The first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first new paper is Bill 1560.
Bill 1560, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $8,375 to Jane D. Simone Esquire for Arbitration Services rendered in connection with FOP arbitration.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm's of recommendation. Bill 1561.
Bill 1561, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney P.C. in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for expert legal services in connection with human resource-related legal litigation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firm's of recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
移到
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
Second.
Need a motion to waive the rules to approve the P cards. There's, our annual Zoom membership is 6,520. It was split for the purposes of approving it. Director Norman's gonna work with procurement to have it approved as our normal invoice next year.
Motion to waive the rules of council. Brief discussion.
Discussion, councilman.
Curious, Mr. Chair, are we paying for the entirety of the city with this, or is this the council version of this? Just curious.
Both, I believe. So this was initially purchased under our emergency declaration so that we can continue our meetings when everything had to shut down so we could have public opinion. Since then, many other departments have been added to it. And so I believe it's both council and the city at large.
Happy to support. Thank you.
Councilman Gross.
Since we have expanded the contract, is it possible to, each of our offices are included under this? Because we had been asking staff to invoice separately. So I don't know if this is how every office has stopped doing that, or when we started, the clerks weren't covering our use of Zoom outside of council meetings. So, you know, I'm still doing Zoom meetings every day, but we're invoicing them on, separately. Should they be included under this contract?
My, I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't either.
My hunch is yes. I was gonna say, Director, you're here. Sorry. If you would kindly give us your name and title for the record.
Good afternoon. Heidi Norman, Director of Innovation and Performance. Thank you. I believe the question was that council members are continuing to pay for Zoom for the meetings that you're holding. That, as I understand it, the Zoom licenses, so there's two charges that I pay. One is for the annual fee, which is just over $6,000, and has been slightly expanded over time since 2020 when we purchased it under the emergency proclamation for the pandemic. And then we also pay a $40 a month fee for ongoing services. I can look into the history. I wasn't the director back in 2020 at the time, so I can look in the history of how that developed in terms of your offices being charged separately on separate licenses. I can't answer off the top of my head, but I can look into it.
And if we can be added, more importantly.
Yeah, so I think the issue here is that since 2020, when we originally purchased that under the emergency procedures, we had not been advised that we needed to go back and do a competitive process to be on a contract. And so it's been paid on the P card for all of this time. And so what I'm asking is if I can pay the annual fees on the P card, and then I can go back and I can conduct a competitive-
I'm totally supportive of paying on the P card today. I'm happy to support it, but also, like, why, why am I making a staffer put it on a credit card and then invoice it as a reimbursement out of the council invoices? It's so silly.
Yeah, that does sound odd, and I don't know the answer to that question.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kraus and President Smith.
You had something?
Yeah, just a clarity. So, the rule is above 5,000. There's two separate lines for 3,000 here. 3,000, the own 3,500. What's the, like, why are we saying 6,000? Is it just because it's on the same date?
It's one invoice that's been split for the purposes of having it approved under P cards.
Okay, so we're just, well, we're not the rules that split, I guess, you know? We do either way?
Right.
I would agree. It just seems like that's what we were, maybe we'll just make it one line. Okay.
Thank you. Hi, Director. Thanks for being here. So I really appreciate the Councilwoman's diligence in bringing this up, because I hadn't gotten quite that, far down that path yet. But each council office, we support a number of community organizations that hold monthly meetings, and we do that through a Zoom account in our office, and through Public Safety, the Planning Forum, and a number of other ones, Knoxville Community Council, and that's how we do it. And I just began to accept it, I guess, that we put it on a credit card, we have a private Zoom account for our office, and we reimburse through our professional services account. But I do think it would be in our best interest to go back, revisit the contract now that we are out of the emergency declaration of the pandemic, and do that in a little more equitable way.
I'd be happy to take a look at that, of course.
Sure. And I'm happy to support today, and I do appreciate your professionalism and wanting to revisit and figuring out a little better way to do this.
Certainly. Thank you.
President.
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross for making sure she pointed that out. Great job. But I also want to thank IMP. You don't hear me thank you very often, but I am gonna thank you for, you did get us through the pandemic, through the Zoom, and doing all the things. It was really something we, none of us were ready for or prepared for, and I just want to thank IMP for their professionalism during that time.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just add, as we're being looked at, having councils added to the city Zoom contract, it would probably have to, each office would have to be looked at as its own department. It wouldn't, so it wouldn't make sense for all of council to have one Zoom account, because then we'd be stepping on each other's toes all day long, versus each council office being looked at as an additional department that's being added to the account, as all the other departments have been added.
Okay, that's good input. Thank you.
And the clerk? Yeah. Councilwoman Wilson?
So, so this is separate from the clerk's account?
That's my understanding. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Let's, let's look into it, though, to make sure.
So, but this account, this renewal here, how do you use it? This is just from the city channel?
City channel is how we use it.
So there's just one account, like, there's literally one user?
In my department, I think that's the only, those are the only users, is city channel.
So like IMP doesn't have, like, when you do your meetings, it's all on Teams, it's not on Zoom?
Correct. Yes. No, we don't. Really, the only time to use Zoom outside of Teams, the reason that we had to get Zoom is because, at least at the time, Teams did not allow for people outside the organization to call in in a secure way that we could control, and Zoom did. So we actually had to move to Zoom professional accounts, not just basic Zoom accounts, in order to be able to provide the kind of security that we needed in those early days of the pandemic.
Good thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? We have waived the rules. All those in favor of the P cards as waived, amended, it's all those say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards have been approved. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Kraus. One supplemental paper is Bill 1585.
Bill 1585, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for Moving Violation Received by an Environmental Services Driver for Being Overweight on a Controlled Road in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,587.50.
A motion to approve. Very brief discussion, please. Thanks, Madam President. I don't need discussion, I just want to offer it if you wanted to speak to it.
Okay, I'm good, actually. Thank you very much.
All those in favor, oh, Councilwoman Wilson?
Yeah. Thanks. The ticket. Ticket.
Chris Horstein, Director of Public Works.
Don Mudrick, Manager of Personnel and Finance, Public Works.
All right, thanks. So what happened here?
One of our environmental services drivers was pulled over on a weight-restricted road leading to the landfill, and they came in significantly overweight for the road. And so this is a violation in that regard.
So they go a different route now?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's a state trooper?
Correct.
All right. Okay, I just want to get that clarity on that.
Yes.
There's a lot of, a lot of streets where trucks are driving with oversized loads on the city streets, and just, just wanted to know a little bit more about this.
Yes, so the driver in question, they have a memo of all weight-restricted streets in their areas where they would go to the landfill. In addition, the road was posted, so there's no practical reason for him to be on this road. Woman Warwick?
Just out of curiosity, do we know what road he was on?
Yeah, he was on Brown Avenue in Welkins Township on the way to our Monroeville location, dump location, landfill.
Okay, so this was, so this was a PA state trooper. Was this a PennDOT road?
Route 130, so a state road.
Okay, I'm just curious, because, yeah, I have the same thing on PennDOT roads, Hazelwood Avenue. This is not your issue, but it's relevant. And to know, and the fine, this was the fine? $5,500 bucks?
Correct.
Because, yeah, there are so many trucks that drive on these roads, and I feel like one ticket like this, maybe this is something to bring up with the PA state troopers, because I feel like we could fix our truck problem pretty quickly. Anyway, that's all.
President?
I'm just curious, what kind of vehicle was it?
It was one of our refuse packers.
Does this have any electric, is it electric?
No, it is not electric.
I'm just curious, because I just read an article somewhere, and I can't remember where, I'm trying to find it, where electric vehicles weigh so much that they're concerned that our infrastructure, current infrastructure, if we go to all electric vehicles cannot handle the weight of those vehicles. So I'm curious if there's anybody's looking into that and checking into that. That's all. Thank you. I just wanted to see if that's what it was.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, she just asked a question, Madam President, and asked, I was curious as to what type of truck. So, so the truck wasn't overcapacitated, it was the road?
Correct. The truck was overweight for the road it was on. The truck itself was not overcapacitated, it was within its legal weight limit for the-
It's a diesel. It's a diesel.
Correct.
And is there a weight limit on those for us, or?
I mean, for the, well, the state regulates the weight limit that can be had on, on roads, which is why some are posted. Certainly, we have some bridges that are posted with weight restrictions as well. But the vehicle is rated by the state also to carry a certain maximum load.
All right, so we're in compliance with the weight limit with the vehicle, but not with that state road?
Correct.
So, you know, there's no fall of our own, it's the weight limit that they put on the road.
The driver has other alternatives to other routes in which they can reach.
Is it a bridge?
I'm not familiar.
Okay. And while I have you here, I never promised my district, the 4th Division, we are breaking ground this year.
We're looking to break-
Got some permits to get through.
We're looking to break ground this year.
We will bring that new facility right to Mr. Kraus's neighborhood that he's long been waiting for, all right? So, okay, thanks. And Donnie, thank you for your work on that. I appreciate you keeping me updated.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Those were interesting questions. I was happy to hear the answers, but I also want to note that I think we should amend the title, because it's just grammatically incorrect, because it says that the driver is overweight.
Yes. It does.
So if, if you wouldn't mind, I'm just gonna do a simple verbal amendment, Madam Clerk, so that it says, instead of driver for being overweight, it should read, it's a motion to amend, it should read driver for driving and overweight load on a controlled road. And I think that is more accurate.
I agree. I caught that. I was like, what?
I would appreciate that. So that was a motion to amend.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill has been amended.
Thank you.
Second round, Councilman Wilson.
All right. Well, Councilman Coghill, maybe if you get a truck that's overweight on your groundbreaking, it'll break the ground for you.
That's not the groundbreaking we're looking for, but yeah. Looking for ribbon cutting.
Gotcha, gotcha. The, these might be a couple dummy questions, but it's just interesting to me, because, well, first, like, do you know how they make a road? Like, how do they, you know, sanction a road that's, has a certain weight limit?
I mean, I can't speak to PennDOT's processes for doing that. I'm sure it has to do with the, you know, designed, engineered capacity of the road to maintain weight.
I wonder if any of our city streets that they pick up trash on or meet any of the weight requirement measurements they took for that road?
I would have to defer that question to Donnie.
It just seems like that driver is on many roads that, you know, are already taken- taken a, taken a beating, so I'm like, so they're just, uh, just an interesting scenario, um, that, you know, we literally pave like a, like an old paper street, or, it's like, you know, I don't know, just, you should see some of the streets, and, yeah, you've seen them, yeah. Uh, anyway, that's interesting. All right, thanks.
Keep them off paper streets, huh?
Yeah. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? Bill takes us to Bill 1551.
Bill 1551, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the efficiency network aid for costs associated with project management for the planning, designing, and services during construction to convert the city's network of high-performance sodium lights, HPS, to energy-efficient LED luminaries within three years, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $2,240,269.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you. Hi, Director, want to come bring your team, please?
Does she want to, or will she?
No, I'm excited about this, actually, uh, coming to fruition. So we're gonna, I hope you're all kinds of good positive things.
Makes me feel good.
Yeah. So welcome, thanks for coming down. Director, will you begin?
Sure. So, we'll introduce ourselves.
Yeah.
Kim Lucas, Director for the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Angie Martinez, I'm Assistant Director with Domi.
Denny Robinson, Project Manager with Domi.
Thank you for being here. So I guess you got good news for us, so we're excited to hear about moving ahead with, uh, the, you know, the installation of our, uh, new, um, LED luminary. So will you do your presentation for us?
Sure. Um, so we are here today, and for a refresher, we came to the table in 2021 with the request for council to authorize the department to enter into a contract for $16 million to do the planning, design, and construction of the LED conversion project for our streetlights. After the department moved to award that contract, we received a protest. Um, and it was determined at that time, in coordination with the administration and the legal department and procurement, that the better route was to split the contract into two distinct parts, one for that design, planning, and construction management, and the other into construction. They were specifically concerned about using an RFP for construction services. So what we did, the team took back the RFP, divided it into two separate projects, two separate contracts, rather, for the same project. And we're here in front of you today because we issued that RFP for the design, planning, and construction management element, and we have selected a vendor, and we would like to move to awarding that contract. That amount is $2.24 million. What that will do is that will not only perform a photometric study of the whole city to determine where we have parts of the community that are underlit, so identifying the need for new lights. It'll also identify parts of our community that are overlit, and to say that we need to reduce the number of lights here, we need to make an adjustment, so that we've got a lighting standard citywide to improve light equity. Um, and that builds on the work of the Department of City Planning a couple years ago. Um, the project will also evaluate our 800-plus trolley poles that we own and determine if they need to be replaced, repaired, or removed, because those are holding up a number of our streetlights, and a lot of them are in a condition that could be considered unsafe. And so we are evaluating that as part of this project as well. Um, so the plan includes public engagement, there will be a website, there will be meetings to inform and educate about the benefits of moving to LED streetlights. Um, and we're referring this to a modernization project, because it's not just about converting existing lights to LED, it's about rightsizing our lighting asset for the city. And we anticipate that there will be cost savings for the city in that conversion. Not only do LEDs consume less energy, we believe that there will be lower maintenance costs associated with upgrading our lights, many of which currently are past the age of useful life in our city.
So that's, if I may, that's exactly where I'd like to sort of let focus, is this sort of, um, uh, reimagining, if you will, and, and equitably distributing light throughout the city. So this is not just about changing light bulbs on existing posts, correct?
Correct.
Right, this is bigger than that. This is, some may be added, some new poles, I don't, if that's the right terminology, may be added, some may be re, uh, removed, but there is a, a concerted and concentrated effort to understand our lighting, our public lighting in a holistic and comprehensive approach, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, and so I love that idea, because from the day I walked in the door, we've talked about, and, or some of our underserved neighbors, especially in our Hilltop, that have been incredibly patient about, about having, uh, lighting appropriately distributed throughout this neighborhood. So for me, this is incredibly good news, and something I'm very, very excited about hearing. And, um, I probably will stop my questions there, because I know members are gonna wanna, I know members are gonna have questions, so I'd rather open the opportunity for them. I'm certainly, uh, by all means supportive of this today, and, uh, want to thank and congratulate you for a, a long process, and your due diligence, your professionalism, and, and ultimately bringing this to fruition. There's a whole, whole bunch of happy people, uh, that I represent, uh, because this is coming to be. So just personally, I want to thank you. I'll relinquish my time, because I know members are gonna have lots of questions about this, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to say thank you to Domi for kind of going over and briefing me on this bill, um, because I had lots and lots of questions the last two times it came up, actually. So we just, we discussed LEDs, um, and, uh, the efficiency network, I think, in 2021, but also in 2018. Um, and so I actually re-watched our 2021 discussion, and, um, I want to, to acknowledge right up front that I'm, I'm so much more comfortable with the bill this time, two years later, because most of the P3 and privatization elements have been taken out. Um, and so as I talked with about Domi, it was quite a few years ago now, maybe seven years ago, maybe less, because I think, um, Councilwoman Strasburger hosted a post-agenda on privatization, where we kind of used the mnemonic DBFOM, design, build, finance, operate, maintain. And the lower you get towards finance, operating, maintaining, you've basically privatized your asset. Um, you know, privatized it in operations, even if you haven't sold the ownership outright. Um, and so even this one is just a design contract, and it doesn't include all of the other elements. And really, the first time it came to the table, now, five years ago, um, it was really like, like the Veolia contract for PWSA that was being tossed around, right, where we would be selling, leasing, right, this streetlight was the concept then, that we're not doing now, which I'm happy we're not doing, we are not leasing out the streetlights, um, because other cities have run into it. We've seen the problems with leasing out parking assets in Chicago, we see the problems leasing out water assets that have destroyed water systems around the country and even in other countries. Um, and so this is not that, and so I'm really grateful. Um, I also had a bunch of questions. Now, there, it's been two years, um, since my staff did the research on LEDs specifically, right? So I'm, I'm happy that we have been a little slow to adopt, because I think some of the early adopter cities ran into problems, ran into cost problems, ran into functionality problems, entire sections of the city going dark because of the failure of the technology. Um, lawsuits against the manufacturers of the LED lights. Uh, I think, um, the, two years ago, um, you all were talking about Albuquerque being happy, but it was just starting. They've now just settled a lawsuit for $3 million. All right, they did begin implementation two years ago in Albuquerque, but it, it again went badly. But some of those things are, are being worked out. So I think, uh, what we were seeing in 2018, for sure, were, I think, were overpromises by the, by the tech companies. Um, and that didn't pan out, and, and really even got the opposite, um, outcomes for cities that were promised, not cost savings, but cost overruns. And, um, so this is just a study, I'm happy to support it, I'm happy that we're being more methodical, I'm happy that we're not doing privatization, um, and that I'm happy that we're learning lessons from other cities. Uh, we talked about Kelvins two years ago, we talked about color intensity, we have emails, I think, from Carnegie Mellon now, again, this is sometime later, that the amber colors are better than the blue colors, for example, because of everything from habitats to people and the impacts, um, the night sky kind of concerns and all those kinds of things. So I'm comfortable that what we're doing here today is just authorizing a study, and that we will have the chance to discuss it more, and with the public, so that we're getting to the equity issues that I know members are rightfully concerned about, but we're also protecting against, um, protecting our assets and, um, saving ourselves some of the hassle that other cities have experienced. So, that's all. I didn't ask you any questions, but again, I, I had my questions answered in the briefing, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
So, when we voted on this two years ago, it was combined. When we voted on this two years ago, it was combined, is the, um, I kind of, um, maybe I misheard you, Councilwoman, but was there leasing in the one, two years ago?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so I misheard you. You were talking about?
About the previous iteration. This is our third time, I think, as a department coming to the table.
A third time. I missed the first time around.
Me too. I think all of us did.
We all did.
That was also a much larger scope, is our understanding, that had smart streetlights included and things like that.
Hmm. Uh, all right, so, and then this is, because when we met, my understanding this was for planning, design, just like it says, for planning, and services. So this, this, uh, part is gonna actually design it, and then we'll go out with the design, and then hire the, the contractor?
Yes, and this.
To install.
And this contract will get us the construction documents that we need to go straight into procurement for that construction contractor.
Okay. All right, great. And then with the dark sky ordinance, this is, they're gonna design it to come into compliance with that?
Yes, we will bring our streetlights into compliance via this project with the dark skies ordinance that was somewhat recently passed by council.
Hmm. I didn't ask this question when I was in, in the, uh, in our, in our briefing, but it came to me, uh, just recently. Will there be any, uh, design that is integrated into the streetlight, uh, or, I don't know, even below the streetlight, if they have to remove like a pole to set it up for any future connections, or any ongoing connections to, in terms of vehicles, or, uh, bicycles, or anything?
That's a great question. I think what you're referring to is that now we have certain elements in our right-of-way that are charged by streetlights. We've got some spin charging stations, and maybe even pogo that are plugged into the streetlights essentially to power them. Denny, I'm not sure, actually.
So, part of the design is to evaluate a network lighting management system, which comes with a seven-pin node on top of the streetlight, like a regular photo cell, see Dustin on? A seven-pin node can be hooked up with anything, whether it's the pogo stations, the scooters, or a camera that you want to put on a pole in the future. So as long as we have the seven-pin receptacle, we have something ready for the future.
And that's at the top?
That's at the top. That's on top of the streetlight. But the, the, the point for the node is to have the, the dimming features, the reporting features for the fixtures themselves.
It does allow us to have opportunities to?
It allows you to have future opportunities.
What about existing, just made me think of something, what about existing, well, you did say existing lights have things that are already plugged into, right? And what are you referring to when you say that?
Bike share stations and scooter charging stations.
What about?
Community groups attach Christmas lights, all sorts of, um, things are attached, or draw power from the streetlight connection.
How's that gonna work out?
Um, we would anticipating transferring over the capabilities of the existing things which are currently tied into the infrastructure. Um, and then we have talked about wanting to make sure that there is an opportunity that if we see bike share, or other sort of micro-mobility expanding in the city, that there is an opportunity to not preclude the location of that type of equipment based on the streetlight infrastructure. Right now, um, some of our decision, um, making and locations for where we can put a, um, mobility hub is constrained, um, by the availability of the streetlight to, uh, be tapped into. So we want to make sure that we're not precluding the best location for, um, micro-mobility or automate, um, uh, smart loadings and enforcement, other things that the city is attaching or drawing, um, uh, from our streetlights by, you know, switching over to a new, um, offering.
All right. And what's the timeline, uh, for this?
For design?
Yeah, until we are ready to go back out to, to RFP for the next?
One year for design, put out, um, construction bids after that.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
One year for design, and then two years for construction. So three-year timeline for the complete project.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick, then Councilman Coghill?
Um, yeah, so just to clarify, it's funny, because you, thank you for the briefing yesterday, and I actually said during the briefing that I, I don't actually get a lot of constituent calls about lights. And then I got, that, like, right after we hung up, I got, um, one which I think, I think comes up, and I've, I've seen elsewhere, and this is about a, just in particular, right, a light on a paper street that's just kind of, feels like, just like a big light in someone's backyard that's not. So will this go through and identify those sort of random lights that are basically a nuisance for the people who live around them to, to try and get rid of those, if they, if they would like?
From the standpoint that this will complete our inventory, we have over 44,000 lights citywide, so that's a, that's a huge asset class that we manage. And it will set a lighting standard. So, um, if that light is deemed to be overlighting an area, then it will be considered for removal. If it's a scenario where, um, the, the technology, you know, if by chance that light is a new light, and it's one of the new LEDs, that would not actually come about through this contract, because it doesn't meet dark skies, and it doesn't meet our Kelvin goals, um, then it would be adjusted. So there is an opportunity also, once the lights are installed, to have a 10% dimming capability. So for new lights that go in, we will have the opportunity to adjust them once they're installed as well.
Okay, and, um, so you mentioned a public process, what, what is that gonna look like?
It's gonna be an education campaign, where we go out and we talk about a lot of the questions that are being discussed today, and, and questions that came up in briefings about the health of LEDs, and how we are gonna determine where light should go, and getting feedback on lighting standards to help influence the design, is, is what that will look like. As soon as we are granted the ability to go forward with the contractor, we'll launch an Engage page, so that we can start collecting feedback from communities, and then we plan on doing a series of meetings as well.
Okay, so, I mean, will there be an opportunity for individuals, because, right, I mean, that, that, as we've heard, there are people who, who want light on their street, who feel unsafe, or whatever, you know, and then there will be people who want to get rid of that one streetlight that's sort of, um, what will be the process for giving that very specialized feedback on individual lights?
I think part of it involves, um, setting the table for the explanation of how a lighting study is done, and how the city makes, um, a selection about the type of fixtures that we put in. Um, we'll be looking for, you know, to select a figure, or, excuse me, a fixture that's gonna allow us to be able to put shielding, or directional, sort of, direct the light away from the house and onto the street. Um, the nuisance light, nuisance lighting, um, may be the result of, you know, the wrong light and the, with the wrong location, and so by starting with a design approach, getting the right light in the right location, there's other mitigating things that we can do to address those really hyper-specific issues, which are probably coming about by wrong light, wrong place.
Mm-hmm. And the Engage page is where people are gonna be able to submit comments, and then they can also participate in the public meetings, where they can share feedback about specific locations that can then be taken into consideration.
Okay, yeah, I mean, because that, just, I mean, just like with everything else, you know, obviously, we need to have a comprehensive approach, a study, just like with traffic calming or anything else, but that individual feedback from people who are sort of living and walking the streets every day about, you know, this one, you know, this place, this is what's happening with this light, I think is important to, and, 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 and important to hear, and also have a, a standardized way to give that feedback, um, which I don't know if, I think now folks probably just call 311, but if there's actually a program going, you know, being, and whether that's through the council office, however, but we should definitely figure out a way to make sure that people, because once they hear about this, right, like, once this becomes, you know, oh, we're reviewing the lighting, then everybody's gonna be like, oh, great, you know, the, all these lighting problems are gonna come out of the woodwork. And so it, I think it'll be important ahead of time to have a way to say, oh, great, you know, thanks for letting us know about the light, the lighting issue that you are having on your street or your corner. This is how we're making sure that that information is getting relayed, and that that light is going to be looked at as part of this larger study.
Um, perhaps to just address your question more directly, um, the project team does include a, a public engagement subconsultant, that will be putting together a public engagement plan, and I think sort of mining our existing 311s, um, the last time around when we did... plan. And I think sort of mining our existing 311s, um, the last time around when we did, um, and we released an RFP for the streetlights, we actually did a survey on Engage just to sort of take the temperature of the types of common streetlight issues, um, that residents were having. And so, I think we'll build a public engagement plan that will hopefully, uh, speak towards, I think, what those sort of common issues are, um, as we're seeing them just in dealing with our current, um, asset inventory.
Okay, great. And then will you, when, when it comes to, well, maybe you don't know this yet, but when it comes to implementation, is it going to be like a street by street or a neighborhood by neighborhood type, where, I mean, just, just to sort of know, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be like the whole city is all at once done, so.
Well, we plan to work with Rebecca's team to do community engagements throughout the entire city, throughout the entire project.
Um, but the project will include a, uh, or the project development piece will include phasing. And so, we'll be looking at how many lights could be, um, uh, converted based on, you know, what geographic area we're going to work, work with. Um, as Denny said, we're anticipating a two-year timeframe to get throughout the entire city. Um, and so, we do want to build in some, um, equity analysis around where in the city we may want to start based on maybe addressing some of those equity issues and, um, or starting the, um, conversion in areas where we know we have an equity issue. But some of that will come from the design and planning process.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank, thanks for being here. I, first, I want to say I could barely get here today because I had so much road work going on throughout my district. So, I want to compliment you on having the contractors out there and, um, specifically for a cobblestone street that we've been getting a lot of complaints for, and a concrete road. So, uh, so it's really nice. I know I'm the first one to complain maybe, but I also want to compliment you when I see good things going on. Uh, you had mentioned the telephone poles, Director. You know, we own the poles. How many poles do we...
Trolley.
Trolley.
Trolley poles.
So, on Broadway Avenue in Beachview, the big steel poles, we own those?
I'm going to defer to Denny or Angie on that because there is a mix of owners for poles citywide.
We own, we own eight hundred of them. PRT still owns some and Duquesne Light owns some.
Well, this is the T, so I would think that PRT owns them, but we could own those as well?
Part of this conversion design of this project is to determine pole ownership. So, that's a big piece.
Interesting.
Um, it, it comes up a lot with the maintenance.
Got it. I just assumed it was PRT. I mean, it's on the...
Never assume.
Yeah, right, right. Let me ask you this. When we, when they put the flag straps on those poles, is that through us? Is that through your department?
Uh, occasionally.
Because I put the flags up in Beachview, right? And I have to carry a little ladder because I have to go up three or four steps. I want those lowered where I could just walk up and down the street and do it, right? I mean, is that something that your department...
We'll get right on that.
Yeah, get right on it.
Well, there's definitely a minimum height that we need to meet ADA compliance. You're not allowed to have anything that someone can hit their head on. So, I think eight feet off the ground is the standard if it's not detectable by Kane, but let us know.
Get you, get you measured up.
Just need a couple stilts, that's all. Okay, the, um, the, uh, the contract for the lighting, the new lighting. First of all, are we replacing all of the lights? Is this all the forty-four thousand lights or is this a fraction of them? How many is consistent?
I believe it's going to be all of them because even the ones that are LED already are not necessarily meeting the standards that we are setting for dark skies compliance as well.
So, throughout the city, every light we have?
And adding new ones.
Right, right.
Removing some if they're not in line with the design.
Yeah, sure, right.
Mainly in Beachview.
And, and, yeah, we're going to start there, right? We were the last to get our blue canisters, so maybe we can be...
No, we are. We are District Two, the last of them.
I still don't have one, so. And, and the other thing was this, um, when those lights, when they, we've talked about this at the table. I think Councilwoman Gross brought it up one day. It's like when they start these LEDs or it's like a strobe, it's like torture. Is that when they burn out? Are they malfunctioning? What, what is that? Do they burn out?
So, the driver, LEDs don't have a ballast. They have a driver. And if that go bad, it starts to strobe.
I mean, it strobes.
Yeah.
So, what happens? Do they have to replace it?
Um, they have to replace the driver inside or replace the whole fixture. Um, that's why we're hoping with this design, we're able to get the network lighting management system because if we have that, I'm able to be in the house and turn it off completely.
And when we call 311 and we, Duquesne Light comes out and changes the bulbs, right?
Um, maintenance contractor, Sergeant Electric.
Oh, Sergeant Electric.
Yes.
So, so the, um, the contract, once we do put, we have to put that out to bid, RFP, right?
We put this out to bid already and so we've selected a contractor for the design and planning, but for the actual construction, the conversion project that we will be putting out to bid.
We put that out to bid. Do we use union contractors on that?
We have certain requirements, whatever the city standard is on that, we have those requirements built in.
Oh, so we go lowest bidder?
That's the reason that we...
Regardless if it's union or not. Will you keep hitting me?
I believe one of the reasons that we use Sergeant Electric is that they are a union household and we have such a great history with sergeants. I would not be surprised if they were not a bidder on the construction portion of it as well. That's within their capacity. I mean, it's within their capacity.
Yeah, because I know I got some flack and I know many of us did when, um, we took a little bit of that, diverted a little bit of the, the study funding. And it was, uh, our local unions that were calling and saying, oh, this is a big contract. So, I didn't know if we, so we didn't pick a contractor. Uh, when the time comes, we'll probably know then or see who applies, but we use union contractors here in the city of Pittsburgh, I believe.
We have.
Does anybody know that? I don't know that, to be honest.
That's the best question for OMB, but we can take a look and see if that, you know, it's lowest responsible bidder and responsive bidder. So, if that is one of the requirements that the city has set forth that needs to be met, like, you know, MWDBE requirements, then we can take a look at that and they would have to meet that requirement.
Okay, thanks.
I thought I was going to have to shut your mic off like I used to do with Darlene.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, I didn't see Councilwoman, Councilwoman Schlossberger and Councilman Wilson.
No, no, no.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to sneak in. Um, no, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to brief, uh, to brief our office on, on this project and, uh, answer our questions. And I have no further questions. All the ones that I wanted to reiterate have already been reiterated or asked today. Just wanted to voice my support for this, um, this conversion in addition and in some cases, uh, removal of lights will no doubt save energy, save, um, taxpayer dollars and save, um, carbon emissions. And so, for all those reasons, I'm supportive. Thank you.
Wilson?
I hear the sodium lights are salty about this.
And they're under a lot of pressure, county members, so.
They're under a lot of pressure. I had to, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is it? I thought this was my whole committee.
Yeah, the, the next committee is Land Use and Economic Development chaired by Councilwoman Wilson. Uh, we have a recommitted paper, Bill fifteen thirty-six.
Bill fifteen thirty-six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixteen of Two Thousand and Fifteen, effective December eighteenth, Two Thousand and Fifteen, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Sixteen Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Habitat for Humanity, Increasing East End Cooperative Ministry and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement.
Motion to approve with brief discussion.
Second.
I'll have a brief discussion and I'll ask for a hold. Um, I think, having been on council these many years, it's challenging working, it's challenging working with members of council. You know, we are, we are, uh, sometimes, um, sometimes parochial, right? Sometimes parochial and sometimes, um, territorial and all those sort of things. And so, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm really saying this for both Barb and some of the newer council people. Um, I kind of have a rule and that is, and, and I won't say it because this violates one of my rules, is I do not believe that a bill should ever originate to, um, to reallocate or touch money that's under my control without my direct participation. I had not had direct participation, nor did I ask for this, nor did I approve this. And it should have never been on the table. I understand that the reason for this is because there's some, some fear of some of that money being reallocated. And I, I'm aware of that and I am sensitive to that. But my principle is beyond that to me. You know, it's, it is, it is council's prerogative. And for me, this is overstepping the division between, separation between the administration and the mayor's office. And so, I am willing to have a conversation about how I may, and even, and I don't even allocate my own money, right? All these years on council, I've always had third pe, third persons to allocate it. So, it's not like I want to, to have this, you know, like the day, kids do, last two years, I think kids from the district have done it. So, I don't, I don't really want to necessarily, um, hand pick who gets it, but I would like to be part of the process in some way. And I'm saying this for all of you because I think that's true for all of us. So, I think the fair thing is to hold it for six weeks. It'll give, uh, whoever wants to, you know, reallocate the money. I think it's, I think it has till September. I'm willing to listen and, you know, be brought in as part of the process and hear the rationale for, um, 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 the cooperative ministry, which I've done, which I know well and have been a part for many, many years. And so, I'm going to now motion to hold for six weeks.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none.
Discussion on the bill, yeah.
Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had my hand up earlier.
I didn't know. I, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion to hold and I'll come back to hold after.
We can have a discussion on the hold now because we're so wild and crazy. So, you have my full support. I completely one-hundred percent concur. I had the exact same discussion a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago. I, I talked to, uh, President Smith about it. I talked to the administration about it. I talked to our budget office about it. These bills should not be coming forward, um, with, unless they're sponsored by the council member. So, you have my full support. Also, I have been, this is our maybe third or fourth week in a row, Councilwoman Kraus, being persnickety. There is no dollar amount in the title of the bill. There should be a dollar amount in the title of the bill, um, so that the public can see if they want to read it, you know, if it's more than, you know, if it's two hundred bucks, maybe the council, you know, the public doesn't want to pull up the text file and read it, but if it's two hundred thousand dollars, maybe the council, you know, members of the public want to pull up the text file and know what that's about. So, anyway, that's, I just wanted to put, throw in my two cents because we've been having this same discussion repeatedly. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I do want to say, Madam Clerk, do you know what happened there? Because I know we asked to hold, I think, four bills, right?
Yes.
And you did hold four, right?
Yes, this bill, it was already going through the process.
That's why.
When we, when we asked for amounts to be put in the title.
So, just so members know, when the numbers come over, the legislation comes over, if the number's not in there, Solicitor Freedson, Clerk's Office, our chairperson, we all look, they all, everyone looks at the legislation, but it's not the way it's supposed to be, we send it back. So, and ask them to, to do it the right way. So, we'll make sure that we're going to continue doing that. We did that this past week. We'll continue to do this, but since this was already through the process, it was one that went through. But I just want to also say, I agree with Councilwoman Burgess that everyone needs to, I think it's communication. I think that, you know, we all just want to know what's going on in our districts. We're responsible and accountable to the public. We meet with the public every day in our neighborhoods. We know what they're saying. We know that the administration talks to some people too, but they talk to a smaller group of people in each of our districts than we do. But they talk to a lot of people across the city. Um, but I just want to say that I think, and everything goes smoother when we all communicate and work together. And so, with that said, I hope that, um, they'll be mindful of, and before sending this kind of legislation over without numbers and without, um, talking to council members. But for the most part, I think they are trying to do more of that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Worwick?
Well, two separate points. One, just with, with regards to the amount of money in the bills, that's helpful. And also, just, I mean, really as much detail as possible. There was another one last week that's referred to various projects. I mean, things like that or it's like that, you know, we're all in a hurry. We like to know what's in it. And anything like that just sort of raises a question. Various, what's that mean? Numerous? Well, how many? You know, any, any kind of wording like that that's not specific, I think is valid for sending back. And, you know, it's a little longer on the page, but it's worthwhile. Um, and then also, and maybe this is a, a question for our council budget director, but, um, just as far as these, um, as these funds go, these CDBG funding, you know, when there's, when, when there's money that hasn't been used that's running out and it would be great to sort of know, you know, have a list because we, we don't want to leave money on the table. We, we don't want it to run out. So, if there's an organization in my district that, you know, hasn't taken advantage of something that was allocated, I don't know when, back then, just sort of a, a periodic update, you know, like, hey, look, this is still what's sitting in the pot. And that way, we are able to call and say, hey, either, you know, are you going to use this? Because if you're not, you know, we can move it over here, this and that. That would, that would be a helpful thing, at least for me. I don't speak for everybody. It'd be helpful for me to have.
Thank you. Uh, second round, Councilwoman...
I just want to say, Lori in our office does a really good job of tracking those dollars. If you want her to work at your office, she'll be happy to do that so she can work with, show them how she does it. But, um, I just want to say, I don't, I don't think that this is, this moving money and doing things and not sending over is isolated to one administration. I want to say that. This has been happening since I've been here. And so, I think that it's, it's the nature that we're in. I mean, we're all in a political world. We're all accountable to different people. We're, we all have different supporters. And so, we're all kind of like trusting, not trusting one another, not knowing how to work with one another. But I just know since being here, it all works better when we communicate. And then we earn up to that trust. If they say, tell us something that they want us to keep confidence, that we keep that confidence, that kind of stuff builds, builds the relationship. And I think that helps a little bit. So, it's, I just want to make sure I say that that's very clearly, that it's not, it's just the nature of this, this job, I think.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of this six-week hold, Councilman?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill be held six weeks. That takes us to our new paper, Bill fifteen sixty-two.
Bill fifteen sixty-two, ordinance accepting a new street name, Rutherford Glen Place, in the fifteenth ward of the city of Pittsburgh, as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in April Two Thousand and Twenty-Three. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four, Public Places and Property, Chapter Four Twenty, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill fifteen sixty-three.
Bill fifteen sixty-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixteen of Two Thousand and Fifteen, effective December eighteenth, Two Thousand and Fifteen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Sixteen Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Improvement Program by Reducing ADA Compliance by Six Thousand Five Hundred Fifty-Four Dollars and Thirty-Four Cents and Increasing CDBG Administration by Six Thousand Five Hundred Fifty-Four Dollars and Thirty-Four Cent.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill fifteen sixty-four.
Bill fifteen sixty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Seventy-Two of Two Thousand and Sixteen, effective January one, Two Thousand and Seventeen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Seventeen Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen through Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Improvement Program by Reducing ADA Compliance by Seven Hundred Fifteen Dollars and Forty-Five Cents and Increasing CDBG Administration by Seven Hundred Fifteen Dollars and Forty-Five Cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Can, I have someone. Could you just give us a little, I'm just curious why we're taking out ADA because there's so many issues with ADA. So, I'm just curious. Second, I'm sorry. I thought Bruce did. Thank you.
Hello.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. Kelly Russell, Assistant Director, Community Development.
Okay, could you just give me a little...
Why is coming out of ADA?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was money from city planning. They couldn't use, so...
They couldn't use, but could Domey use, I wonder?
That I do not know.
Yeah, I'm just saying that they're always looking for some funding, so, just saying.
Well, I was going to also say that this money was going to be used. Uh, it's one of those funds that's kind of up against the debt line, so to speak. So, we were going to put it toward administration for funds that we could get out for advertising, for public ads and things like that. But you want to see if it could be moved to Domey.
I, I'm just, I just think, to me, if you're telling me ad, advertising is more important than ADA compliance, I just don't see it. I, I mean, if, if I had to get around in a wheelchair, I'd want to make sure that my city was doing everything they could to, and so, I'm just wondering if maybe the administration even realized that this was, you know, where it was being moved from, that's all. I bet if you asked the mayor, he'd want to help because he has his own committee, just saying for the disability... saying for the disability committee.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Wilson?
Yeah, I remember I was in previous discussions with city planning about our ASL interpreters and making sure that they're funded. Is that, this wasn't that pot of money, was it?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. That's it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, affirmative recommendation. Bill 1565.
Bill 1565, Resolution Further Mending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, so as to reallocate Community Development Block Grant CARES Act, funding and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Is this 1565?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Wilson?
Is there someone here that could speak to the?
Kelly, Mr. Russell.
I'm one.
Okay, yeah.
They need to come up with it.
Could you, since, you know, you opened the bill and there's some different pots of money that we moved, could you explain what's going on here?
All right, so these are part of the CDBGCV, the COVID funds. And what's going on is we're looking to move these from, was originally given to the URA, and the URA couldn't spend the funds. So they gave us the money back through all this period back, and I've actually got a timeline here, so I'm looking down at my computer. So around February of 2023, that's when the URA told us they couldn't spend the funds.
What was that, what was that allocated to them for?
HSP, Housing Stabilization Funds and Home Ownership Fund, the Home Ownership Fund.
Do you know why they couldn't use it?
At that time, they just could not use those funds. Also, with a lot of other COVID funds on the street back then, it was more easier to use some of those other, because I think there was so much federal funding on the street back then, so those were a little bit easier funds to use than, as opposed to the funds that the URA had received here, but they could not use them. You all. Are you here for this bill? Do you know about this bill? Yeah, yeah, come on. Know who that is. Thanks, I, it's only, seeing them at the end there. All right, you know the routine.
Yeah, David Gager, Senior Advisor, URA. I believe what Kelly's referring to is that there were other funds made available. These were initially for the HSP program, which is, you know, a rent assistance program that we provide, but I believe with the availability and the program flexibility of the ERAP funding that eventually came through in like much more substantial amounts, we spent the ERAP funding and have since sent this funding back.
All right, so yeah, well, to clarify, because I was going to get to this too, I'm looking at the total cost, 2270? Is that, is that what's being moved?
No, it's more than that, sir.
Yeah, it doesn't say here.
So we're moving.
I'm looking at the summary and the summary says total cost. Is that what I'm supposed to be looking at?
I'm looking at this, so I can't see what you're looking at, I'm sorry. I printed all of the bills, so that might be a different bill, sir. Looks about 2 million.
Change? I'm looking at the change.
Mm-hmm. So there's three different line items, if I can just go about.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. They were helpful by talking to this microphone. Okay. So what we're doing is we're moving, so 716,085 is going to go to the Jewish Family and Community Service Food Pantry. 57,899.20 will go to Just Mediation Pittsburgh, and 286,500 will go to the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. That's the, when you add those three, that's your million dollars right there. And what's also happening is with these funds, with the, with the Jewish family food pantry, they're going to buy additional food. With the Just Mediation Pittsburgh, that's to help with some of their tenant landlord assistance programs. And with the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank, they are going to end up doing a ERP system and also scanners to help with things within the food bank to help get the food out in the easier purch, an easier manner. We actually had to clear a couple of these purchases with our HUD rep too, to make sure that they were fine.
Yeah, so how's, how's that made? Those determinations, those three organizations?
Okay, so back when this funding was made, decisions back in 2020, of course, during COVID, there were two pot allocations of CDBGCV fundings, the pot one and pot two that totaled about 11 million dollars. The previous.
No, I'm familiar with these three organizations, how were they chosen?
Well, I was about to say, the previous administration had made funding decisions, funding decisions with those monies. Why we picked those three organizations specifically is they were able to spend some of their previous allocations efficiently, efficiently in a timely manner. Initially, what happened when we started this, there was actually an 80% CDBGCV spending deadline of June 2nd. We were about 65% at that time. About in April, that 80% deadline was moved, but we had already started discussions with these other organizations, so no matter what, we just still wanted to get them the funding because we had started the conversation with them, they had spent money previously, and we just wanted to uphold that.
So that, that was 2 million, but we only took, I don't know, there's, it doesn't matter, there's remaining 963,000. What's the, what's the plan with those dollars?
I'm sorry, say that one more time, sir.
I'm looking at this revised budget that was being moved was 2,024.
You want to look at this?
The nine.
It's the same thing he has, but it's just.
963. 963 is still remaining?
I just don't see.
963 is right there.
Oh, there's still some leftover funding, that's not everything.
So when, when's the, what's the deadline to spend these dollars?
The full deadline is June 2nd of 2025.
June 2nd of 2025.
Correct.
Okay. Hey, can we meet about this?
Yes.
All right, great. No, I'm just going to try and have a conversation and see what, what's possible for the city.
Any further discussion?
I'm good.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I guess I had a quick question. So if, you know, this 2 million or so, why, I mean, again, rent assistance, food assistance, I get it's all critical stuff, but why were you guys not able to hand this out as rent assistance?
Yeah, ERAP was a, a program that was funded at greater amounts and with more flexibility and could provide actually more assistance to our residents than these funds could do. So we switched to mainly relying on ERAP in order to provide that assistance.
So you had to choose between the two, was it like an either or situation?
Yeah, I would want to look into the, the specifics around it, but yes, normally you can't use sort of the both federal funding sources to provide for the same benefit. I can get you a better explanation though later.
I mean, that's okay, I just was sort of curious about why. Okay. All right, yeah, I mean, that's, that makes sense.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
I'm supportive of these uses, again, being persnickety, this, especially a 2 million, I just give an example that if it was 200,000, this should be in the title because maybe you'd want to read the text file. And this is 2 million and like, you know, a few minutes later. And then also, you know, I'm supportive of the uses, but I do think that council should be having these discussions. And so, you know, I'm happy to vote for this today, but I'm going to ask that our budget office let us know of any other unexpended funds that have been coming in from the pandemic funds, right? I had thought they were all gone. And so I really would like an update, not just on the ERPA, but on the pots of funds previously, because there is need out there and we should be having discussion about how to get this money to where the needs are. So Pete, Rea, that's on you. You can send us an update, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Affirmative recommendation. Okay, so we've exhausted that committee. So now we're on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, our first, the papers, Bill 1552.
Bill 1552, Resolution Providing for Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Critical Satwa Gaps Project, where PWSA will be responsible for paying 100% of actual expenses involved in certain work described herein and itemized in Exhibit B at an amount not to exceed $6,339.69 and further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Ramp in Public Sidewalk by $6,339.69.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
I don't actually have a lot of information on this program, and so if members would like further information, I can get it to you by email if you're comfortable voting for today. So are there any questions?
Any note, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1553.
Bill 1553, Resolution Adopting Plan.
I apologize, Mr. Chair, would you read the, these next two bills together, 1553 and 1554? I'm going to hold them.
Yes.
Bill, Bill 1553, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 3239th Street, 15201, and Bill 1554, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 166 Banner Way, 9th Ward.
Motion to hold six weeks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held six weeks. Bill 1555.
Bill 1555, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1045 Forts Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1556.
Bill 1556, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for the performance of certain work in connection with the Hill District Master Plan in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the Hill District Master Plan.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1557.
Bill 1557, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh or an Urban Redevelopment Authority affiliate to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in, into the following publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 26P, Lot 164, Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1558.
Bill 1558, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Reed Roberts Housing Limited Partnership or Related Entity for the Sale of Block 11A, Lots 35, 36, 37, 38, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 46, 47, and 48, and Block 11E, Lots 300A, 300B, 301, 304, 305, 306, 307, 308, 309, 310, 311, 312, 313, 314, 318, and 319 in the 3rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District 6.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just curious.
Sure. This is to, so as you're aware, we are going after a choice neighborhood application to rebuild all of Beffer dwellings, public, old, very old public housing in the Hill District. This is to allow us to actually begin Phase 1 of that redevelopment, irregardless of whether or not we receive the federal money from the federal, from HUD. We're going to do the very first phase of development on this site. So it's approximately 200-some units? 123 units of new housing where the residents from Beffer dwellings will be able to move one time into those new units, and then we'll tear down and we'll begin rebuilding there.
I'm just going to say, Councilwoman Lavelle, you're in this agenda repeatedly, you're just very fortunate to have you, but I would hope that now coming forward, not that they have so many projects going in the Hill that they'll start looking at the rest of the city where there's a lot of, a lot of blight and a lot of need also. So just want to say that part. Thank you.
Understood. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. And lastly, Bill 1559.
Bill 1559, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Salem's Market Center Avenue LLC or related entity for the Sale of Block 11A, Lot 123, 3rd Ward, 6th Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll let you go because that one's for Middle Eastern business.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Our meeting announcements, tomorrow, Thursday, June 1st at 10:00 a.m., council will hold pre-agenda interviews for the Disruptive Property Appeals Board, the Housing Authority Board of Directors, and the Commission on Human Relations. Next week, council will hold our regular and Sunday committee meetings on Tuesday, June 6th, and Wednesday, June 7th at 10:00 a.m., respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meetings. Registered to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And I have a number of members. Madam President?
I'm just going to, again, congratulate you because I think you and Reverend Burgess have done a tremendous job in rebuilding your communities and I, and I think that, I hope that we learn a little bit from you so that we can do some of this, see some of these projects started in our areas that we want to see happen. And yours is happening on its own, Deb, so I'm sorry.
We need the opposite.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, thank you. I need to motion for a public hearing, a cablecast public hearing for the Mobility Enhancement District, and we'll work on setting the date with the community members so that we can keep, keep the next process, dip in the process moving. Motion to hold a cablecast public hearing for the Mobility Enhancement District.
Second.